All the, uh, let's kind of finish our meeting of October 7th, 2025. Anybody care to do an indication for county business?
I will. Goodbye, Father. We thank you for this beautiful fall day. We ask for your blessings and mercies on our county as we go into the winter months, keeping us safe and well. We ask that you are with us today as we discuss and make decisions for our county and citizens in Jesus' name, amen.
Mr. Horton, would you care? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have an agenda? I think I have one addition if this is okay with the board. To, uh, we had a gentleman put in for the open sportsman position on the predator board. My only concern with approving it right now is if they own any, I don't know if they own any livestock. So maybe, I don't know, it would be best to reach out to the individual first and then add them to the next agenda or...
These are really different for that.
But that's, that's a lot. Anybody else got anything?
Better to be cautious than have to remove because...
I agree. Yeah. We'll put her on next. You would like, you have a comment? Okay, okay.
Want a clarification, Nathan? What is owning livestock? What does that do?
So, the predator board is set up as, uh, I believe it's, uh, might be nine individuals, but they base it off of, there's X amount of sheep, oh, landowners, X amount of cattle landowners, and then there's a member of the public who, uh, I don't believe can own livestock. And then there's also a sportsman that can't own livestock, otherwise it sways. I think it goes way back to the day of the cattle and sheep battle, you know, between landowners, and so they try to keep it as even as it possibly can.
So it's like in their bylaws or whatever they call it?
Yeah, state statute.
Oh, okay.
Interesting, really.
Yeah. And they, you know, they're, uh, they kind of operate off of state funds, so we really don't have a lot to reach into what they do other than appointing the board members. Any other additions or change to the agenda? Hearing, uh, the motion to approve the agenda is, is the loop.
Second.
Got a proper second to approve the agenda as is in the discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay. Vouchers. Nine fifty-five, so I'll just go ahead and do public comment. Is there any public comment?
You're gonna have to happen off.
Any comments? Okay. About five minutes, we'll wait for it. Hopefully Mike will get here with his deal. We climb lead. Read time. Check over a minute.
I'm sure they know that I added here.
So in, on the minutes. Under 2025 law enforcement age back replacement RFP discussion. Thank you, in the last sense, it just said second by Commissioner and Chief, correct? The Commissioner Board. The only thing I had in mind.
I wasn't here, so.
It's really tricky today.
Yeah.
For some reason.
Yeah. It's true.
Give it up.
That was like your one. Yes. Mr. Chairman, I'm here.
No problem. I'll just wait on it.
Till you get back.
On the minutes. If these things start, we did approve. These subs want to go down there.
I was like, oh my gosh.
Really interesting to me, honestly, we do approve the ones that we have available right now. So, why the words, uh, entertain a motion to pay the claims for ad pro with Commissioner Ertman abstaining.
So moved.
Second. Motion properly seconded, any discussion? Hearing, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now I would also entertain a motion to pay the airport claims with Commissioner Borden abstaining.
Second.
So moved.
So moved. She is...
Any other... With proper second, uh, in movement, I guess. Or, uh, any discussion, sorry. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now I will entertain a motion to approve all other vouchers presented before us minus...
Number seven, four, four, zero, four.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion properly seconded?
Wait, didn't Marty and Garrett sent them already?
Yeah. He moved.
Oh, jeez.
Stay at Marty, hold it here. Go on. It's second.
It's very long meeting.
But we've just begun.
No discussion? All right, all those in favor of the AP vouchers being approved minus the aforementioned voucher, please say aye.
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 Post. Okay, please muddle through that.
Really?
Yeah. Okay, minutes of September 16th, 2025. I just had the one feel that I saw. They don't have anything? Just like Marty.
Move to, move to approve minutes of September 16th, 2025 as amended.
Second.
Motion properly seconded to approve the minutes of 2025 as amended. For September 16th, 2025 as amended.
Fair enough.
Uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. All right. You get it, cheer. You can't get it yet.
She's bringing it up. I got the wrong. It's giving twenty-four.
Yeah, we'll jump on it later if we, when we get a free moment, get it, get it. Executive session minutes. I think I'm done. I did it.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the, the two executive session minutes from September 16th, 2025.
Second.
Motion properly seconded to approve executive session minutes from September 16th, 2025. We're doing them both. Is that what we're doing?
Sure.
Both sets of minutes. Any discussion?
All abstained.
Okay. Thank you, Marty.
I meant to say that on the last one. I need both.
All those in favor, please say aye. Yes, sir.
Uh, is there a way to decipher one from the other?
I can put a number two, or I can put the, um, what it was for, the state statute behind them.
Okay, if we could do that, group like that in the minutes.
Just wanted you to separate out.
No, there's just no way of, I mean, if we're gonna both be approved, I understand, but to approve one and not the other.
Yeah.
It needs to be...
There's minutes.
Yes, the motion is to approve both, incorrect?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing, uh, all those in favor of approving both sets of executive session minutes from September 16th, 2025, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, post. All right. Special meeting minutes of September 19th. This is a, a meeting that we had to have to get a letter in to Drew Consulting in time to become part of the discussion process for the Forest Service, um, and their planning, moving forward with Forest Service lands. Um, the special meeting was advertised and then held and called to order by Vice Chairman Ed Wagner at 11:08 a.m. at Weston County Courthouse. Commissioner Vera Huber and Clerk Hadlock were present. Chairman Nathan Todd joined via phone. Commissioner Huber led the invocation and pledged allegiance. Commissioner Huber moved to approve the Chairman's, Vice Chairman's signature on the Forest Service EIS letter, seconded by Chairman Todd Carey. No further business, the meeting adjourned at 11:11 a.m. Any need to see that?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I will recuse myself for lack of attendance.
Me too. Make the motion to approve the minutes and special meeting of September 19th, 2025.
Second.
A proper second to approve the minutes, the special meeting of September 19th, 2025. Any discussion? Thanks for taking my extra time, how you guys today for that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. We don't need to talk. I'm here with your board. Yeah.
Say that after time. Said we were ahead, but he changed it.
Good job. Don't be sure to mess that up for you.
Thanks a lot.
They were really worried about you. They thought that that pink dinosaur was a nipple at first.
Yeah, that was Rachel's project. Left it on the counter for a couple minutes.
See, Marty, it's not a nipple, it's a dabba dee.
Of course.
Look to approve detective's report.
Second.
Motion properly seconded to approve the treasurer's report. Any discussion on that?
I do have one.
Yes, ma'am.
I think we need to, um, I see that we've got a payment for home loan security, but I'm still concerned that we're seventy thousand dollars in the hole. I'd like at some point to have a discussion about that, why this has taken so long. It's a long time.
Grant reimbursement? Fair enough. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the eighty treasurer's report, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Maybe let's invite Gilbert up next to me. Hold up this. We have the, uh, for us to know is the collections for the firm clerk of eleven thousand three hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty-four cents. Burke District Court for two thousand five hundred forty-one dollars. Public Health for two hundred ninety dollars. Sheriff's Department for six hundred forty-five dollars. And then the airport for two thousand five hundred seventeen dollars and seventy-two cents. It's quite large, but there's a, a full-time payment for, appears for, for full year, is that right here?
It was a back payment. Broken a little landways.
Okay. Yeah, there's a description on the back.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I asked that you break up the collections the same as you did the voucher.
Yeah. Good thinking. I wouldn't have caught that.
What was the increase in the airport?
Two, two.
The airport?
Collections?
Yeah.
Oh, the collections for this night was two thousand five hundred seventeen dollars and seventy-two cents.
Yeah, I know, I see that. What was the issue on it?
Oh, it was back payment on property lease for the hangar.
Oh, okay, okay. For the full year?
Actually, it was more than a year.
May 1st, 2013.
Yeah, it's all years. Over it's been a while.
Wow, okay. It comes up current now?
It is.
Through... May 1st, 2026.
Okay. Wow, okay. Just one hanger?
Correct. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the monthly statement of eleven thousand three hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty-four cents for the Weston County Clerk's office.
Second.
Motion properly seconded, any discussion? Hearing, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. We have a motion for Clerk District Court for twenty-five forty-one.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the collection for Clerk District Court in the amount of two thousand five hundred forty-one dollars.
Second.
Motion properly seconded for the Clerk District Court's twenty-five forty-one. Any discussion? Hearing, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Contain a motion for airport minus Commissioner Bortons. He's gonna have to exclude himself in the amount of twenty-five seventeen point seven two. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion properly seconded. Any discussion on that?
Think we'll save up for the airport.
Got it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I think most do accept collection for the public health for not two hundred and ninety dollars and no cents.
Second.
Motion properly seconded for public health, two hundred and ninety dollars. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There's one more. Contain a motion for sheriff for six hundred and forty-five dollars.
Second.
Second.
Motion properly seconded. Or, I'm sorry, any discussion on Sheriff's Department? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
You cannot fix Washington DC from within Washington DC. You have to fix it from the outside, it has to be citizen uprising. And the only way you can do it is through an Article V convention. There are lots of other ideas that people throw out there that, that aren't in the Constitution necessarily. Um, this is a peaceful, legal, constitutional method for reigning in the federal government, which, like I said earlier, is the responsibility of the states. That's, that's one of their roles, and they've abdicated that responsibility horribly. Our founders would be appalled that we're thinking of solutions other than an Article V convention, um, because that's the, the process they put in for this purpose.
All those motions are...
Only thing, and then I could have brought it up on every single one of them, but all a couple of them, you know. I still would like to have miscellaneous be explained what they are and other be explained. I don't know what that means. So, I'd like to have those explained to me, even if it's something simple as copies, facts, whatever. Just so the public knows what the, what that is.
Understand.
Oh, thank you very much. How are you? How are you?
This is probably a pen.
Here, this is a pen. It has a little joy on it.
A what?
It has a little joy on it. This is a pen.
Okay. We've got a whole bunch of...
That's a pen.
That's true.
We've got Weston County Law and Order Degree Management Plan, Weston County Emergency Evacuation Plan, Weston County Long-Term Counter Outage Plan, Weston County Family Reunification Plan, and Weston County Sheltering and Support Plan. Is that all? I guess Smash Fatalities Plan, I don't see that. Degree Management.
I thought we were proceeding.
On the other end, I don't know.
So, he had that update, some dates on that? So, maybe he didn't have to update that, I don't even reason, but how many are there?
Three, four, five, six.
This is about sheltering, on the, you want to read that?
Yeah.
Here's mask casualty, I got it.
Okay. So, did I just...
They also just read together.
All right, what is it?
What is it left?
This, that page is all you know, look like the shelter.
What does it, the sheltering place or the mass fatality?
Mass fatality, sir.
Looks like this.
Oh, it is here, mass fatality.
So, the OP plan.
This is the sheltering, sheltering.
Mass fatality. So, the Weston County Degree Management?
Yeah, that's the one.
Weston County Reunification?
Got it.
The Weston County Evacuation Plan. Weston County LTPO Plan.
Got it.
That's under the OP.
Which is the OP?
Emergency upgrade.
Marty, do you see that one?
I don't think I...
Three, four, five, six.
There's seven here.
Long-term, mass, reunification, and emergency.
Which one were missing? The OP?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
This beats it like raw a little bit, because we're going to, we're gonna pass all these plans, which we haven't had one discussion on, we don't know what changes have occurred. We're just gonna mass, say it's okay, I'm not comfortable. I would like for me and this board and the public to know what's in these things. What are we doing?
I can agree with that.
So, I, Mr. Chairman, I would move, oh, she's not in here.
A quick, uh, it's related to shoot back from there.
I'll just tell you what my motion's gonna be, is that we set aside fifteen minutes or a half an hour or something for each of those to be explained to us and to the general public of what these are. Hi, Gilbert. So, you'll be in on it, but we're not.
We're gonna burn.
We don't have a secretary.
We're gonna burn some time. You have questions on the plans?
We, what we would like, I'll see if the board will agree with me, is that maybe you gave us a fifteen-minute on, at another meeting, um, explanation of perhaps what you changed, what's this plan means, those kind of things. Just for us and for the public.
Basically, the same things that you signed when you were chairman.
So, I, I think that's probably a good time for us to
Okay.
to go through and, and tell the general public what's, what's in here, what maybe you've changed, like I said.
I can do that, there's...
But I haven't made a motion yet.
Nothing's really changed, other than a few names, like the Degree Management Plan had changed from the county landfill to the new name of the, this whole waste district. Minor changes, 'cause we haven't had much to change, so. It's just the annual two-year change of all the plans, um, that we have to do. There's the, the sheltering plan is was just signed by you guys last year, 'cause it's a fairly new plan, but those are all annexes that go into the County Emergency Operation Plan. The Emergency Operation Plan is something we do every two years. Um, the only things that really changes in that is if we have to change names, basically from dispatch change to the Consolidated Dispatch Center. I mean, there's, there is no major changes, but if you guys want to take time to, I know they all went together, there's a lot of plans. It's a lot of reading, but they're all available for people to come back and look at. I don't post them online like other counties, because that leaves us susceptible for people to use them against us. But they're all, you're all welcome to come read them at any time, they're always available. So, what do you guys want to do? Is there, it's an urgency to have you sign this meeting? Uh, no, there, there's not. They've already been signed by the city, they've already been signed by Upton. And, um, it just needed to be signed. Last year it was November, so November's when I need to get them back to the state. So, for my two-year, my two-year time. So, if we hypothetically postpone and give you a twenty or thirty minutes time slot next... Yeah, whatever you guys know. Cruise through them a little bit. If you guys wanna look at them or have any questions on them, I'll answer any questions you need. But I'll give you, you guys time to look through them if you want. I tried my best a couple nights ago. There's, there's a lot there to read, I understand, but, um, like Scott, he does the mass casualty plan. This is the corner, he, there was no changes made in that one.
I think it's just, um, applicable that there's a small explanation as to what it is we are signing.
I, yeah, you guys need to know what you're signing.
But I think the public does too. So, I think if it, if it was just a, a, a nice summation of, of, um, kinda going through and maybe not giving a huge, but, so that we do have time to ask questions or to put highlighters. I, I did the same thing, I just, and then I felt I was being pinched in a corner, 'cause I just got them on. I don't do my email, because it's been hacked and I don't touch it. Um, 'cause somebody else is reading it, so I don't touch it.
Okay.
Um, so I have to go through them with the paper copy.
Do you agree?
And so, I'd like to...
And I'll start, now we start working on the courthouse evacuation plans, the continuing operation plans, and then so we got two years to follow those down.
Well, we appreciate you taking your time and telling the public and everything, so.
So, this one's a giant, this is one.
That one, nothing.
Well, that's the, that's the County Emergency Operation Plan, so if we have a disaster, that's what we're supposed to follow. And then if, like, if I'm not here, that gives who's in charge after me, and then who's in charge after that, and then, and like, what's our, our risk assessments, and it has all that stuff in that.
Cool.
What we're supposed to follow. Thank you. Thanks, Gilbert. So, can we put this into a binder, all these plans, like, if we approve these, where it's sitting somewhere. I know, but if, if he's not here...
He's the one that has the signed copy, I mean, we can make the copy.
Yeah, yeah. Keep, keep one of these and just put it in a binder, so that there's easy access, maybe in here, somebody. So, so, this is a discussion, like, maybe next, uh, this is a thought process that was going on, was maybe getting, uh, having Gilbert into, for a twenty-minute, thirty-minute, whatever deal at the next meeting to... Yeah, and any changes that were made, but of course, that was, they haven't done anything officially yet. Guess that's up to the pleasure of the board.
I make motion to table the signatures for approval on the county emergency plans brought to us by Gilbert, Mr. Nelson, and to address it at our next meeting, where we can discuss it a little bit further.
Second. Is, okay, motion properly seconded, uh, discussion. Where can we access this, can you email this to? This is huge, this one, so. It's been a printout, is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
I would like a printout, sorry.
So, the reason that Gabe had sent, he had made changes to other ones for dates, and I thought that was in that one, and so when I sent them all to you guys, I thought that one was... I thought all seven were in that email.
Printout copy for Marty, I'll keep this one for the board, if you would please. Okay, we got a motion on the floor to table the, is it seven plans?
Yes.
Seven plans, the OP plan, the LTPO plan, the county evacuation plan, the reunification plan, degree management plan, sheltering plan, and the mass fatalities plan until the October seventeenth meeting. Any discussion? Yes, Marty?
Could we give it maybe forty minutes?
Sure. Any discussion at the next meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you all, I think that'll do good.
Now, we have Resolution twenty-five twenty-three. Garrett's gonna throw on a recue himself for this, this is maybe... Oh, it's got Garrett's signature on it? Why do you need that?
I don't know. 'Cause normally, the chairman's on them. But I don't know.
Are you the president of the, you know, House of Representatives? It just says board member. Yes, sir, I don't know. Local government representative.
Is this a new, is this a new grant?
No.
It's the airport, uh, it's a hangar project, right?
Mm-hmm.
When was this grant approved?
A long time ago, this is just, but, uh, they had sent an email for, um, the chairman tried to sign it, and then said not to sign it. And then we get the funds, and it's already been signed, but, I mean, I don't know if that's okay.
Is this the first we've heard of it as this board?
No.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I'm trying to figure out where we are.
Appears during the grant process, you know, when the city of Newcastle and, and the chairman of the county commissioners sign mutually on a grant, somehow it got sent, it must've got sent to the airport board and Garrett's signature's on it. As a board... got sent to the airport board and Garrett's signature's on it as a board member.
Mr. Chair, is it for the final payment on the?
I think it's the grant total.
Oh, I think it's just.
It's like three to 336,000 or whatever. Where's that? It's dated on 9/5/25, though.
That would have been the one set through, like, I believe.
We need to reach out. When was the original grant, sorry?
But this is a new amount brought into our budget, am I correct?
No, I don't think that's a amount brought in. We received funds already, a check that was done prior to this, I believe. Because what's this email?
Seventy-six thousand, roughly.
Yeah, the check is for something not what this is. The check is for the hangar project that's currently.
Maybe I'll reach, I'm gonna just go to the board, I'll reach out to them and visit, maybe Garrett knows that I should get on a conference call with him, and probably there was just a oversight, maybe I, I don't know, I assume it's supposed to be my signature on it or Don's, probably. It'd be my, who would have been chairman two years ago?
That would have been, it was a registered blackhead, I wouldn't have looked back at that.
So my, my curiosity is if the grant was brought in by this board, then the grant amount would be budgeted as such. So I'm curious what we're doing, if the, if the grant's already there, we receive a payment, we've got it. I'm not sure where we're at, I'm not quite understanding what's going on here. If this is a new grant, then I'd like to see the grant paperwork where we passed it. But this.
So this resolution, we have paperwork, two totally different items.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Chair, if we, clarification, if we can move this to one of the 1045.
Yeah. Yeah. Was there a different grant that you guys were looking to apply for?
It's another one, no. It was a hundred. Um, was that anywhere? I'm wondering if that wasn't any additions to, because there was a change in work order that wasn't put out enough.
Yeah.
Sidewalks.
Because it went over budget?
This wasn't incorporated with the original, so.
We know there's a budget, we got a whole nightmare with that, and I'm just trying to get this figured out tomorrow. Where are we, what are we doing, how's the system working? Because all of a sudden we're paying. We're doing a lot of covering, of payments, and then we sit around and we wait for these payments. And I realize that's the system, I have no problem with the longer law, I don't have to understand that. But if we don't know what is, what's going on, and we get these little things and the questions start building and boiling, I don't know where we are. And if, if my duty, the fiduciary part of my duty on this board, I should know what's going on, and I don't know what we're doing. So somebody's gonna have to fill in. But we have a problem on the, on the cash revenue because airport boards always in the hole. So we need to either get this figured out, how we do this, where we get the information, when the information comes in, we know, and we're not questioning what this is. Where did this check come from, who signed, what? I, I also understand that the system is weird with the Department of Transportation because I always love to send an email, and that was the argument I had when I was chairman is you can't ask me to sign this when I have not got, not got more approval to sign it. And then they put this little, it's a deadline, we're putting it out for bid and all that, well, that's your problem. Um, so either we get that figured out, I just, I'm clueless, and I think everybody else is clueless where we are. Finding some answers, so I'm a big no on this.
Third, sir, no on the third.
316. Airport. But this one, um, towards the resolution, it's going over to a grant. What's the, um?
316, 226.
About to be the hangar, right? Got a hangar construction project.
If you'll look at your cash, treasure cash detail report.
Does it match what looks like? The payment request is a lot.
It's brought in 76. It's just 71. See, the amount requested for reimbursement on this is 71,877, six cents, and this is the budget adjustments for 76,000, six cents, so these numbers aren't a guide. This pay request doesn't jive with this.
But we have a math.
Yeah, we're bringing in more than the pay request. See, if it was the other way around, that might be different, but this pay request is for 70, just under 72,000, and this is for 76,000. There's 4,000 more on this we brought in than what this pay request is, Mr. Chair.
So are there two requests?
Your vote, vote number four. Good, Mr. Chair, I believe in your approximately 4,000.
Yeah.
The, the 4,000, there was a, a time deadline, I'll get involved with this a little bit, there's a time deadline between the time of completion and penalties. If the building was not finished at a specific date, then that's a potential loss of revenue for the, the request was more.
The request is less than what we're bringing in.
Yes.
Four, $4,000, you're up.
Yeah.
That will also be discussed.
Yeah, because on this pay request, you're lying, you're, this is the, the total there was, uh.
22,000.
22,000. Request is 17,000.
Mr. Chair, probably would have been helpful to have it on the backside for discussion. If there's some things that we're doing.
Yes, ma'am.
And so part, and, and part of that discussion is, is so they, they suffer a penalty because they're out, where does that money go to? So does that money, because it was a penalty, go back into the grant, so there's extra money now? I mean, I'm confused. Does it go into the general?
Let's, let's do the, move on to the tax rule corrections and then invite. Okay. Marty, it's, it's, uh, keeping track of my expenditures, if what's coming in, it's a nightmare.
Well, Mr. Chairman, there, there's, we gotta have a better system.
The number there matches. If you take the FFA, the FAA share and the state's share together, they come up to this amount right here. Where'd that come up at?
And Garrett's signature on this is probably fine then, isn't it? Because he's acting as a board member for airport board, right? So they shouldn't.
I mean, he's the authorized requestor, as the airport board, the, that pay request. Was it, was that's their grant? They're the ones that are requesting it.
That makes more sense. Either way, we'll move, we'll wait until. All right. All right, we got a pile of additions and affidavits to tax rule correction.
Yeah, there's a lot.
Would it be okay? Yeah, I mean, I, I went through them on the internet, I don't know, Marty, have you had a chance to see them? You okay with me reading them off, potentially?
What's some of the already of them, oil and gas?
Fair amount of it is, yeah.
Oil and gas, I understand. If you have some oddball, it'd be interesting.
I, I think I can go through them pretty quick. We have oil, oil field salvage and service company, which is a fiddler creek, fiddler creek field, a tax difference of an increase of 6,447.37. Same company, and this is for, this is going back to like, production year '22.
Sure, makes sense.
So another one for production year of '23, same company, same field, 9,874.51. Same company, same field, '24, now, we're at 10,225.79 increase. Now, same company, production year '24, tax year '25, which, this is the part that I struggle with, a decrease of 10,368.81. This is where I was getting confused going through these. Production year '23, a decrease, same company, same field, of 10,012.61. Same company, same field, of 2022, a decrease of 6,537.54. Those are our big oil field ones. Then we jump into a taxpayer had an erroneously admitted acreage on a parcel split condo, so we overtaxed them and it was a decrease of 1,226.85. Same thing again of 1431, or 1436.01. Here's a trailer house that was moved out of state that we taxed, but it was moved prior, and there's an affidavit in here, of 172.19 difference negative. Shop code store, operating store closed, personal property account, tax difference of negative 1808.23. True oil, an increase, tax, production year '24, tax year '25, 211.99. Western American Resources, Plum Canyon, same years, 1,202.0 increase, 49 cents. Western American Plum Canyon again in '24, '25, an increase of 1188.28. Another with Western American and Plum Canyon, this is the previous year from the prior, a decrease of 21.75. Western American Finn Shirley, production '24, tax year '25, a decrease of 298.34. Another Plum Canyon with Western American, production year '23, tax '24, a decrease of 3,399.53. Another Plum Canyon with Western American, tax, production year '23, tax year '24, 882.04 decrease. Double Eagle LLC Dewey Dome Field, production year '21, tax year '22, 3,129.32 increase. Double Eagle Dewey Dome, production year '21, tax year '22, a 500.69 increase. Another one with Double Eagle, '21, '22, with Dewey Dome, 270.35 increase. P O and G Operating, Claretton Oil Field, an increase of 911.76 for '24, '25. P O and G Operating, another increase with that Claretton Field, '24, '25, about 452.98. So I'm going to a little more personal, three of those are personal property adjustments.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to approve the board's signature on the tax rule corrections, number 1665, and the collection of number 1675 through 1695. Second?
On the floor to approve 1665 tax rule correction, and then 1675 through 1695, the proper second discussion. Yes, Mr. Chair.
This is why you would always want legislators to understand what a issue goes through as a county commissioner. That when you go to set a budget and you have no idea that two, three years later you are adjusting, this is a nightmare for a little tiny county like ours, can you imagine what the highly populated families are? So when somebody thinks they're doing something to help someone, always remember that for every action, there's an opposite. And this is a, and this is a bookkeeping nightmare. And it's also a budget nightmare.
Yeah, imagine the folks, the county's question.
With oil. That's just my editorial, thank you for letting me out.
Anybody else on, uh, discussion on those tax rule corrections? And I know the gist of the, basically what they were doing in those, during those COVID years, they were trying During those COVID years, they were trying to give breaks to oil companies paying taxes and trying, letting them put off a year or two or whatever it was. And when the oil went to zero dollars. So they were trying to help out these companies to pay us when the money, a couple of years from now, when you have the money to pay it. But now we're seeing the after effects of it. So I'm 100% with you. Pain in the neck. Any other discussion? Hearing the... Paul's in favor of board signature on 1665 and 1675 through 1695, please say aye.
Aye.
Close.
And then my pen dies. Because there's no joy left. Thanks. The joy's gone.
More. Thank you.
Hello?
Bob, morning.
I haven't even run any assessments.
That's probably the sirens.
Maybe they're from the sirens, yeah. You could see that, too.
All right. Morning.
Good.
Hangar rental. We also have a couple. I think there might be some other questions, too, associated with the final, or this draw on the $76,000 draw. But I think we might have slugged that for the most part.
First of all, I'm going to say the hangars are complete. We got the approval from the state fire marshal last week. We can have to go. And they're in the process of people leasing them right now. If they're not all leased, they anticipate surely. We've got a list of at least seven people that want to. We already have a couple of people already out. So that's the good news. And that's it, and we're gonna... I guess it directed. The other thing is, the last meeting I was at there, Commissioner Irvin mentioned something about a fund for the airport to cover unexpected expenses. They thought it was a sinking fund or something like that. And they were talking to the the state auditor about how it's set up or something, or if that happened or not. But I did a little research on my own on that type of funding. And what I came up with is the sinking fund goes by 47 different names. You know? Probably the one I like better than sinking, because sinking doesn't sound really good to me. But a contingency fund. And part of things that a contingency fund can be used for is building or contingency repair maintenance. It'd be... Fun to be... I'm gonna read this for you so I don't mess it up here. With this fund supplied, they're using the hangar leases and their nightly rental fee. So we wouldn't be asking for any more money from the county or the state or the city. Some of the costs associated with use of fund for would use to pay additional snow removal costs, grass removal, electric meter removal installation costs, and other unforeseen expenses. With Powder River Energy, the way electricity is each each hangar meter separate, because eight meters there. Of course, if you're down with Powder River, you know you pay a fee for monthly revenue usage and every time they plug it in and unplug it. So that's a cost that's there. Some benefits of a fund, if we had access to it on the airport board, is the airport board and manager handle most emergency low cost needs of the airport. So we wouldn't be coming, you know, we need $250 or $300 for additional fees to fix a door or $8,000 to fix an unexpected door emergency. We'd use that fund. Please regulate it. Any usage of that would be presented monthly at a meeting, saying this is a summary of the use of the fund, if it was used or not used, with an explanation of why we did use the fund. Try to take some of that. Coming to you every day and every Friday, but every month saying, hey, we need this small item.
I assume if that's what that designated money is for is maintenance, it's probably okay, right? I mean, the problem is, is how broad... That's where you have to be careful with the guy that says, well, it's maintenance, you know? And maybe it's something that where an auditor might look at it and go...
I don't know, yeah. I, you know, did get a chance to talk to the state auditor about that.
I didn't.
To see, you know, what he... I'm assuming he's the one that puts the limits on the regulations on it.
He's the one that would say, this looks funky, you need to change it, or it doesn't look funky and it's fine.
And see, I think that it makes it one step removed. And so without this eyes and then your eyes, it comes back on these eyes. And so I think you have a couple of removals here, if I'm trying to make sense here. But I think his argument is that these eyes are on it because we funded.
Who's he?
The auditor.
But have you talked to him?
No, but I'm basing it on what I know of others.
I will call him this afternoon, Bobby. He's usually pretty good about answering the phone and a few other questions like that.
We're just... And we're talking about... You're talking about your hangar rents. That's what we've been talking about.
Well, yeah.
Basing that for your additional...
Yeah, well, then they come to you from additional funds. The revenue created, created from the lease that we used to produce. There are other airports around that have hangar leases, have any of them, and that's if they have funds set up that they use the money for. We haven't talked to them yet, but we know they do.
Yeah, even there works with other airports.
And maybe it'd be good for you, if you could reach out to some, and see.
Aren't they under the same system we are?
Well, they're in state.
What do you mean, like a... Free form commissioner?
And the city.
I don't know. We don't know.
I think that's where your difficulty comes, is the structure of what we are.
Well, you're very unique, yes.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy. We have a bootlegger's liquor. The deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing. The coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's 30 people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
Exactly. And so I think that probably has some parameters on it because of the uniqueness of this store.
The only thing we could add the city about, what we went to them, too, and asked, kind of same thing, the thing they have a different idea about setting it up in an enterprise fund. And I'm not sure exactly what that entails, but basically, they were all in favor. They didn't have a problem with setting them up. They signed up for your accurate expenditures. It was at the time, weren't sure how we needed to do it. We actually asked them to see if they would come talk to you guys about it.
They were in favor of a fund we control. They were questioning about is whether the fund the city has and the fund that you have and the fund that we have. So all of a sudden, I have three funds. And I said, no, it'd be just one fund, kind of like a contingency fund the airport board would do used for whatever we needed. And then we would report to both you and the city council. This is what we use the funds for. We had additional costs in door repair. That was $500 this month. And this money came out of this fund. City council, county commissioner. There's the money right here.
That was a little bit articulated.
They were thinking, well, they would have to create a fund for us, and you have to create a fund for us. And we, that's where it's at. No, we just, it'd be one fund reporting to both people.
With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, I just, I'm not comfortable with that until I have an auditor. You're mixing funds. And for the reporting of it, I'm just... I'm not sure I'm comfortable. And I'll be real honest with you. When I get, when we get a a collection that's from 2013, I'm not real comfortable at all. So you'll have to understand that.
Well, I guess I'm not saying...
You have a collection for 2,517, but I don't know what the splitting is for an air... a hangar rent that was from 2013 all the way to now.
That was...
Beat Arson.
Beat Arson.
Beat Arson. When that was set up, back when the contract was drawn up, the beat was that the other... There's his hangar that's set up on a long-term lease, where every... the other hangar was set up on a yearly lease for the land, land lease. And it was told to him that he would not receive a bill. It was his responsibility to pay the amount in the contract. He did up until 2019. And then from 2008, I believe, was that. And so that was... And he just didn't pay. And then now that he's selling his hangar, he said, well, I realized I hadn't paid until I wanted to make a right. But that's the second deal. We send out lease, new yearly leases for the other hangars on a yearly deal. But it was, it was under the agreement with him that he pays it every year, but he will not get a bill for it. He would just, it's up to him to do it. That's why it's...
In defense, that was before my time and Al's time on the airport board. I was not aware that lease was structured that way. I think when that was done in 2009, it might even been a member on the airport board who was a commissioner or whether the commissioner was aware of it because he set up that way. This individual.
So back to the, this sinking account of anyone called. I think Paul's biggest concern is going to be that there's... We're showing that there's money being brought in. It's similar to like Fairground. If they make $20,000, we have to show that somewhere, that $20,000 came from somewhere and that it went somewhere. So I think that would probably be just that there's an accounting side of all those funds. But he, and he may have parameters, too, of what he... You know, I could throw some maintenance on X, Y, or Z. But I mean, what's stretching the limits, I guess, for something like that? I don't know. I don't know. It's worth a phone call to them. I can, I can try to reach out this afternoon and see.
So some of us are sitting here, me and my son, we're gonna each rent a hangar. We're gonna pay yearly. So where do we, where does that money go to right now? What do we do with it?
Well, you should put it in your books that the rent has been paid, the way I understand it. And then it goes back to the county general.
So we do it like my hangar lease, write it to the Weston County? Is that the same way as my other hangar?
Yeah, some of them make it out to the airport, which is...
That's what's confusing to us. The money comes to Weston County.
Yeah, so it all ends up... Yeah, that's where... Like all the hangar leases and stuff are all...
So the clerk that assists, or somebody has a ledger that they're getting revenue from, you. When do you bring it here to the courthouse? Who do you take that to? So, but you, you get through internet and a ledger sometimes?
So right now, we do the reports. And yes, Amber keeps track of that. We, if it needs to be.
So you could go back and you could say, this is how much?
And we don't, yeah, we don't have a lot. And then Suzie gives half of that to the city.
Comes from the airport. So what happens is we have like 10,000 bucks in there, because we plan on at least 10,000 a year coming in. And it's in this piggy bank. Where does, can anybody just come and rob from that? Or just airport? Okay, so we could come a few days and ask, well, we need 4,000 because... Yeah, the general fund. Yeah, the general fund.
Unless you set up a separate account.
Like we're wanting to do that.
Yeah. This is a follow-on. We could figure out how we do that so they don't have, they have a little pool of money that they can build out of.
I mean, I hope to satisfy you, Mr. Littler, Mr. Littler.
It's Mrs. But it's okay.
We're not, we're not, we're not the clerk at a county store. Someone gives us a check, we put it through, and then we bring it to the bank here. We don't cash that check anyplace. We don't have access to any account at the airport. So if you're worried about us having an account now, we don't have that. We just bring a check to you.
No problem.
Okay. We may imply that we, where we doing our money now. We never see the money, we bring it in here.
Well, with all due respect, this is the first year that I've ever seen an airport collection.
Yeah, we brought that out. She should have it. She should be a part of them if they bring here.
That's what I'm saying. It's the first time we've ever, as a board, accepted collections. So I'm not arguing with them.
As a member of the board for four and a half years, I have never seen a revenue sheet because we have no access to... The one fuck figures I see are the budget I turn in to you guys that we request. I never see anything when we turn in.
So the interesting thing that would be is on your budget, you should have a portion of those revenues coming in. I mean, if there was a, if there was a way that we did this, just like we would do with the Fairgrounds, we would have revenues coming in. And those, that budget would be based on what revenues you're bringing in. And that's the way that probably should be done. And that's what I would ask. The interesting thing, and then it'd be under a line item also, under your line items.
That would be, that's the way I kind of thought it began. That way, any money that comes in would be separate.
Still have to come in here.
Right, yeah, exactly. But it would still be in the line.
I don't think it's ever been that way.
Yeah, and I'm all for that. Any income that would be separated and brought out showing directly what was brought in, I'm all for that.
The question to Paul would just be strictly revolving around hangar rent money.
Right.
Mr. Chairman. And not, and not involving the city or the county to put funds in there.
Yep. You would take that to that account directly positive.
So I think there's a confusion there, too. Perhaps it's going to put more money in and no...
No, that was, that was our deal. And we have to talk about this as a board, is that because we knew the budgets were paid for both entities, city and county, this was something that, hey, we could do this and not be a burden on the two entities.
I think I got a pretty good feel for it. So let me call Paul this afternoon. Let's put it on hold, didn't this? See if everybody's okay with that. And I think we can probably have a good answer for that.
Okay.
Second, there was anything else yet on that aspect? So we had some confusion on this. We're attempting to pass a resolution for an amendment to the budget. And we were digging through here, trying to figure numbers. And I think Ed finally figured it out. The federal, and the federal reimbursement was $71,877.76. Then the state share was $4,791.85. And that was the, is that the last draw on the... It's not, okay. So...
Yeah, it's the one that they still have. They still have another, one payment left. Or one more draw left out. That was holding one down. That they have to make sure everything... Of course, and also have to go for outside, not for one day before they can...
Close it in the...
Yeah. Because the contractor exceeded the completion date, there are some things that had to... Because the contractor exceeded the completion date, there are some things that had to didn't meet the fire marshal's completion. They had to come back and change. They had to subcontractors had to come back and redo some stuff. There's some costs in there that we're not eating, that are gonna be, that our contractor and our engineers are still working out.
In the final.
In the final, yeah. And that's one thing that FAA and the state pull back a percentage. So everything's done and that's, that's why it's not the final.
So that, one that was sent to Nate to sign for, for an amendment, is that we're not doing that one anymore?
The reason for that is because it was too late. And they went into the next fiscal year. And that fiscal year, the new one starts, so they will still be sending one of those out, but it'll be chief audit maybe by the latter part of this one, the first part of November.
And that's part of the hangar construction?
Yeah, the, that amendment increases the grant, and I think they're gonna do it on the, the state was still trying to figure things out because they got, originally what they had done was they, they sent those amendments out to the long people, to the old commission and, and Pam was one of the ones that was on there instead of the mayor anyway. So once they got all that figured out, it was too late. And so now they, whether or not they have to, how they amend that, they were still working on it. So, and it's a, it's a small amendment, but that was. So they were just gonna, they said, forget about that one. They'll send out a new one to get things figured out.
So this, and I don't think it belongs in a budget amendment. That's just, that's my philosophy here. But does this one, is that a penalty or a payment from the state?
Payment, that goes from the federal, the feds and the state, from part of the project prior to, this is a not closing one, this is a large payment prior to the final closing.
So we've paid the contractor for that and this is a repayment of that. So there's no, there's no penalties in this?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, so what's the structure? Now, it is my philosophy that if there's a penalty, I'm, I'm curious, who gets the penalty? Who enforces the penalty? Who gets the penalty?
If that's the state, well, we dictate how that works.
Okay, that to me is a budget adjustment because we didn't have any idea that was coming.
Well, we.
Well, we'll deal with that at another time. And they'll probably keep it because they're the ones that enforce it. And that's fine with me. This is just a repayment of, of, of a grant.
Yeah, we just have to put the $76,000 into that account. That hangar project account.
So the airport, you don't actually pay theirs until we get the fund in because there's not money in it. So like, once we get this money from the state, then we pay us on theirs. They hold the bills until we get the money from the state. Airports are different than online security. We don't pay, we don't wait till the money comes in. We hold the bills. Airport holds the bills till we get the checks. So we're not waiting on the money.
But in our budget, we put in the airport grant, right?
The grants, they're the funds.
Right. So, I mean, that's already in the budget that we have a grant for X, Y, Z, right?
No, that's now, that's why we have to do the budget.
Why?
Because we didn't know how much the amount is. That's why all the adjustments were made.
But we have a grant for the hangar. Am I correct? Am I, am I correct?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so the, the grant goes in our budget that we're gonna spend X, Y, Z amount of money to build this hangar. Am I correct? Am I correct?
The amount is changed. That's why we're doing this adjustment.
So the original, what you're saying is the original grant amount, where is it showing that we're subtracting down to the final?
Right. And then we get down to zero. So was there an adjustment to the grant, which would have been an adjustment as such as a, as a, as a budget adjustment? Because we got an additional monies to the grant.
Yes, there's an A and a B. And we were only told about the one.
So did we bring that in into our budget as a grant?